It is 6:05. I will call the Board to Selectmen, January 8th, 2024. Meeting to order. I apologize for the delay in calling to order for anybody that's joining us online. We were waiting for a quorum. Thank you. So given that it is 6:05, we have a public hearing. The public hearing is regarding the proposed transfer of an all-alcohol restaurant license from Aurora Gray Inc., DBA The Ripple, to Catch Grill Inc., DBA Shipyard Tavern. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Wait, second it?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
You could make motion?
And just have her second it?
Right. The entire meeting, you should make motion and she should second it.
Okay.
There's no one to... You can entertain and there's two other people, but it's not going to work tonight.
We never have two people at our meetings.
Right.
So I'm going to ask Attorney McCarthy to join us at the podium. If you can speak into the microphone, it's about six inches away so that the audience that's joining us online can hear you. So I'm going to start with just a quick introduction of we have received the application to the ABCC and the Local Licensing Board for the transfer of the all-alcohol license from Ripple to the Shipyard Tavern. And if you could just give us a little bit of history, get us to this point, there's a few things in the application that I'm going to review after, but if you want to bring us up to speed and then we'll go through all of my questions.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. Is this good?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So you accurately described the essence of the deal. Corey, who I think is Corey Matthews, who's here with me tonight, who I think is known to your board, is the owner of the Blue Marlin and the Boathouse Grill here in town. He's entered into an agreement to purchase The Ripple, the business, as well as the real estate. The real estate will be held in a trust, 74 Main Street Essex Realty Trust. Corey will be the trustee, assuming everything gets approved. The business will be owned by Catch Grill Inc., DBA Shipyard Tavern. Corey will be the president of that entity, and he's also the sole shareholder. The proposed manager of record is Corey's son Cameron, who's here with us as well. His information's in the packet, but just in summary, he's been working at Blue Marlin since 2000, I think, May of 2014. He's essentially a very hands-on employee. He functions as an assistant manager. He's also a chef, runs the kitchen from time to time. So he's well-versed in the business and would be a good full-time manager of record at the Shipyard. Corey will be at the restaurant every day, just as he is in all of his restaurants, so he'll still be around. So what we're asking for, and I'll go into a few details too, is a consent here for a transfer of the liquor license from Aurora Gray Inc., it's Mr. Redden's entity, the current manager of record, and as I understand, an owner of The Ripple, which, as you know, has had some starts and stops as a business, brought Mr. Redden to the point of selling the business, and Corey is obviously happy to step up to complete the transaction. As far as what's planned, is not a lot of changes planned. The exterior of the building will stay the same, the deck will stay the same, there's no alterations to the parking lot or the exterior of the building. There might be some adjustments on the inside of the building, that can be a discussion for a later day, but it's going to stay substantially the same. Obviously, there'll be new management and new name, but much of the fabric and the nature of the existing restaurant will stay in place. It'll be, as are Corey's other restaurants, a first-class, family-oriented restaurant. No change there. It will operate as the current one does. Primary area is on the first floor, there'll be a small room on the second floor, as there currently is. The deck will stay as it is, no change to the number of entrances. The hours will stay the same, I have them documented here, but they're on the existing license, so I won't go into any detail on that unless you'd like me to. That said, that's essentially the essence of the deal. I'd be happy to answer any questions, go through the application, whatever you'd like.
So traditionally, what I do is I go through the application and I just review it for accuracy, any questions, comments, concerns that I may have. Then the board will chime in and ask any questions that they may have about the application or anything about the business enterprise. So we are very excited about this transfer. I certainly welcome a new business, I think it's great. And you're right, Corey Matthews has been a great steward to our community in his ownership of the Boathouse and the Blue Marlin, so we're excited to see his third endeavor here in town. Do you have the application in front of you?
I do.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go, we have 90 pages here, a good majority of it is, no question for me, quite a big majority of this is actually, as you know, about the triple net lease and things that
Right.
aren't of concern to the Licensing Board. Mine is strictly about the application for the alcohol.
You're happy to go through it.
So if you want to start with the first page that we received this afternoon, the assignment of the interest in purchase and sale agreement, which is more of a protection for your client than anything. In the one paragraph up the top, it does say relating to the real property and buildings there on known and numbered as 74 Main Street, it says Ipswich, Mass.
Right.
That should say Essex, I'm assuming.
Right.
So correction for you there, that's just for your own records.
I have it.
On the very first page, licensing authority certification, actually, before we go into this, the one piece that I want to mention is that the Town of Essex has to do Corey checks on Corey Matthews, Cameron Matthews, and Stephen Caruso.
Right.
You did sign, or each of you have the Corey check application for the state. The Town also does that as the local licensing board, so I will need all three of them to sign the Town's application for acceptance of that.
Yeah, we're not allowed to use the state form when we do our own Corey checks.
Of course.
So they need to, all three need to come in and see me with their license and then, because I have to see their license when they fill out the form.
Not a problem.
Although they already have the other facility?
They do.
Okay.
It has to be done for each license transfer, because something may have happened from the time they were licensed there to the new one, so.
Sure.
So that will just be another note.
Yeah, no problem.
On the very front, description of premises, first floor, five rooms, 3,484 square feet. Second floor, two rooms, 345 square feet, and then 630 square feet of the outside deck. Interior design changes are as depicted on the attached plan, primarily a realignment of the bar, no changes of the deck area. One of the things that I'm noticing is not captured in the description of premises, which is important for the board, because we tend to go through this with a log of the restaurants over time, whether it was through COVID or sewer flow or things like that, is the actual seat number. So I've tried to do some work here to figure out what the seat count is. We have what we have internally. The building inspector does an annual inspection every year, and they do the new and renewal sort of certificate of inspection, which is the building inspector and the fire chief, they go out and they look at that. This says that the allowable occupant load is 100 people, so we have that from the building inspector. Then I have, our tallies of numbers is equal to 118 seats, and somewhere further in your application, and again, I'm going to go page by page, but I did notice that you've documented, bear with me. In one location, you document 128 seating capacity, so I just want to get some clarity on that. Do you have that?
So I have an identical calculation at 128 that was done by the architect.
Okay.
So that's where the 128.
This is where the 128 came from? This is from the architect?
That's right.
Perfect.
That's right.
Okay.
So that's the allowable occupant load, but the plan that's submitted with the application shows 117 seats.
Yes, and then the...
Yeah, Madam Chair, so our assistant is going to go down and get the report that Ripple did in 2021, I believe, when we asked all restaurants for the record to verify what is there and how they're seating. So we'll be able to compare that as well.
Perfect.
It's important to understand that in Essex, anything that would be deemed an increase in the number of seats is a problem with wastewater flow, because we have a limitation, all of our wastewater goes to the city of Gloucester, and each facility, if more flow is needed, actually has to purchase that. So we'll be able to, why don't you move on and we'll come back to this?
I'll move on. So we'll go back to the seat count, but I want to make sure that the seat count ends up described in the description of premises.
Very good.
Okay. Next page that we're going to look at is going to be page one of the actual application.
Okay.
So it says in the description that Catch Grill Inc. is purchasing the existing licensed establishment from Aurora Gray Inc. and plans to maintain the existing family-oriented first-class restaurant theme. So my question is, as we go further into the application, we see that there is a purchase and sales agreement that actually shows Stephen Caruso purchasing the entity. However, when I look at the registry, the registry of state to look at corporations, it appears as if Catch Grill is owned by Corey Matthews.
Right.
So just some clarification there.
That's why I submitted the assignment of the interest in the person's sale agreement from Stephen Caruso to Catch Grill Inc., which needs the correction from Ipswich.
Which needs the correction.
But that should cover that.
That will cover it. Okay, perfect. On page three of the application.
Yep.
Down in the last section, 6B, previously held interest in an alcoholic beverage license, clearly there was interest held because we filled in as required, however, we need to check yes, so if we can just check that and initial it.
Oh, sure.
That's just a side note. The next, on the next page, page four, the corporate structure, section seven, it says date of incorporation, 1/10/23. On this Secretary of State, I have this incorporated on 12/11/19.
Um...
The Catch Grill.
Catch Grill Inc.?
Yes.
I have the Secretary's...
Sure.
19, 2019?
Yes.
Oh, that's it? Okay.
So...
I'm sorry, you had...
That was going to be the next response.
Oh, okay.
And then I blocked that and put ahead.
I assumed that was... So the date on the Secretary of State's website is 12/11 of 2019.
Okay, thank you.
You realize that the ABCC is going to go through this as I did, and they, I don't want you to deal with any sort of holdup or rejections, because it's looking like information is not accurate.
Thank you.
So I'm just catching it before it gets there.
Madam Chair, the existing number of seats that we got from the previous owner is 118 seats. So anything that's below that would be permissible. Of course, anything that is above that would not be without first speaking with the Town and getting the extra flow, et cetera.
Which is actually good, because on the schematic that we have on the back, which I'll get to when we get there, it doesn't show more than 118, it actually shows 117 when I count, so, but we'll get there.
That's why it's, that's why, it is 117 on the application.
On page one of the application, down low, it's 128. That's why I bring this up, so that we can...
Oh, I think, so my copy has 117. I think we might have changed the page out, but we'll correct it.
Okay.
My copy says 117.
Okay, so...
I think we substituted a page earlier, but no matter, we'll make sure that's correct.
Excellent.
So is that deck seating, and that's why it may be different, those numbers, 117?
Seats are seats, because it's all about sewer pass, sewer flow.
There's a one-seat difference, it sounds like, 118, we show 117.
Right, and I think you should go with the 118.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
Yep.
So, but we want to make sure we incorporate that into the description on page one, as well as the numbers.
I have that, yeah, I'm working on that right now.
Okay, excellent.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
So, with Bill Sandborn's, this is from the engineer, this is an occupancy load for the building. This can be, a meeting can be requested with the building inspector to talk about the occupancy load of the building, and if they want to bring it from the 118 that currently exists to 128, they are...
No, we don't.
They don't. So this is just for reference.
Maybe in the future, but that was just background.
Oh.
If he would defer to the, if this is from an architect?
From an engineer?
Engineer, he would defer to that, I can tell you that.
Okay.
So I can talk with him about the difference between the two.
The difference, okay. It would be nice if we could get the annual inspection updated to the 118 so that everything matches. Perfect.
If it's allowed to 128, I'd have more than last...
It's not, it's not. You have to go through a procedure and a process to do that.
I just...
Not tonight, anyway.
Right, not tonight, Corey, but it is something you can do down the road. It would be buying more flow, and depending on how many, that would be an extra 10 seats at how many gallons a day?
Thirty-five gallons per day, per seat, so it's 350 gallons. So one bedroom in a house is like 800 bucks, so that's 110, so three times that, you know, it's like 2,500 bucks. But you have to go through a process.
Yeah, and we can guide you through that if you want to, that's just not for tonight. Okay. So on page five of the application, under source of financing, it's noted twice that Gloucester Bank will be the first mortgage holder, and I don't know that it matters, except it's Bank Gloucester, and even the approval further in the application is listed as Bank Gloucester.
Right.
It doesn't matter to me that it's not the right name of the bank, I just don't know if it's going to matter to the ABCC, so I'm just...
We'll make the correction.
Okay.
Since we're making other corrections.
I mentioned the Corey check of all three people, you're going to take care of that?
Right, the local Corey, yep.
Also on page six? A pen?
No, 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 I want the invoices so I can stop signing warrants.
Okay. Page six of the application, down the bottom, manager's signature. Cameron did sign this, but it wasn't dated.
Oh, okay.
Page eight of the application, Corey signed this, I just need him to actually title it and date it.
Title it, sorry?
Uh, page eight, title and date.
Oh, title and date, okay.
First page of the applicant's statement, if we can just date that. And then you clarified, I did have a post-it on the purchase and sales agreement referencing Stephen Caruso versus Corey Matthews. You've already clarified that, so that was another. And then bear with me, I think that's the last of my post-its, but this is a lot of pages, so give me a moment. On page two of the triple net lease between 74 Main Street Realty Trust, the triple net lease honestly is of no interest to the local licensing authority, that's strictly for you, but I do notice that on page two of that, the rent commencement date, it's listed as 255 Newburyport Turnpike.
Oh, that's from the old one.
Right, so you might want to update that to the new address.
Can I take a, can I see what you have there?
I'm going to actually take a five-minute recess after the hearing, and I'm going to come show you all of my post-its, so that you can make sure you have everything that we've just discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, so the final, the very last page, which is the schematic of the potential new drawing, which looks awesome, I noticed here in very small print where the outdoor deck is, it says size of pad, deck, and location of the door to be determined. None of the door, you know, that's certainly going to come with a building permit and through the building inspector and so on and so forth, but I just want to be clear again about the seating, and I know that we've talked about this a little bit, but you are within the wetlands buffer, you're in the, right in the resource area on the river, so we'll need to make sure that if you're going to do anything with that deck, it goes through proper channels, Conservation Commission, Building Inspector's Office, permits will need to be pulled, and seats do matter. So currently, we have 16 seats out there, and I just want to make sure, or I'm sorry, 24 seats, just want to make sure that we can't expand on that number due to sewer flow.
Understood.
Okay, perfect. So those are all of my questions and kind of comments about the application. So Alva, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
So I hate to do this, but I've heard rumors. Is it going to be seasonal or year-round? Year-round, okay. That's, I had heard rumors and I just wanted to make sure. Either way is fine with me, I just wanted to understand.
Great.
It's a different kind of license if it's seasonal.
Okay, good to know. Brand new to this stuff, so thank you.
Do you have any other questions? I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn my attention to the manager of record and just ask a couple of questions of Cameron, I just wanted to get kind of the legal stuff out of the way with the application.
Sure.
Alva, do you have any other questions?
I do not.
Okay, Cameron, if you want to join us up at the microphone, I just have one or two questions. So, bear with me. Cameron, so I see in the application that you are going to be the manager of record.
Yep.
Congratulations, if this all goes well.
Thank you.
You also have been working at the restaurant at the Blue Marlin since you were 14.
Yes.
Can you give me a little bit of background on your experience and your interaction with just the day-to-day service of alcohol and things like that?
Okay, no problem. So first off, I started there working, I think, 2014 as a bussler, and then throughout the years, I worked there, high school and everything. And then later on, I started cooking and doing bussing, doing both, and then now I'm there since COVID happened, 2020, at the other restaurant, Spuds, or Blue Boat, I worked there as a manager for the first time, and been a manager at the Blue Marlins ever since COVID ended in 2021, working there.
Great. The only other piece that I didn't see in this application is a serve-safe certificate?
Yes, I do have that.
You do have it?
I just got it done two months ago.
Perfect, so you're tip-certified, excellent. Terrific, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Alva, do you have anything for Cameron?
I do not.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have no further questions. If we have no other attorney...
McCarthy?
No.
McCarthy, do you have anything for us?
No, nothing I have.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public...
Make a motion.
Sorry, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will also make a motion to approve the transfer of the all-liquor license from Ripple to the Boatyard Tavern contingent upon corrections?
Shipyard Tavern.
I'm sorry, Shipyard Tavern, contingent upon corrections to the application and Corey checks for Corey Matthews, Cameron Matthews, and Stephen Caruso to the Town of Essex.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to take a five-minute recess to review the application, and I will be back momentarily.
You can fade.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you to everybody for patiently waiting while we took a recess. We are now back in session, and we will continue with the Town Administrator's report.
First item in my report has to do with the review of my goals for the upcoming calendar year. The Board asked that I put together some language with respect to a new goal that wasn't part of my initial list of suggestions, and I provided that to the Board. In addition, the Board asked that I take a goal that had to do with the 30 Apple Street parcel and modify that for your review this evening.
I have no, I, this looks fine to me.
Okay, it looks fine to me as well, so I will take, I will make a motion to approve the Town Administrator's goals for 2024.
So moved?
All those...
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, the next item is the proposal that was done for design services, engineering services for the necessary repairs to the public safety building. The Board asked me to check in with the company that put that together to determine if there's any way we could pare down the cost. And although we've been told that there is a limited amount of paring down that could be done, it's not really recommended, because the savings is, in the grand scheme of things, is not going to be that great. In speaking with them, and I got additional information from both Copeland and from Northeast Roofing, and had a discussion with them on it, and they said, "Look, it's really important that we get some of these things field-verified as they're happening." So there, again, you could go with an option that would give you a limited savings to their original proposal, but I'm not recommending it, because I don't think it's enough of a savings to justify the risk of not having good field review.
And we're still within the building budget, correct?
Yes.
We're not going over it?
No.
Within the contingency.
Within the contingency.
Actually, we're still within the building budget, because the contract came in $800,000 less than the engineer's estimate.
Plus we have the...
Plus a contingency.
Yeah, okay, so that's, I'm fine with accepting that, I'm...
So I will make a motion to, I will make a, we don't have the original scope of work in front of us, does that matter? This is just the after.
I gave you the explanation of, yeah, I have the original one if you want to see it.
I don't need to see it, I just want to make sure that we...
Yeah, I don't need to see it.
I just want to say it the right way, so the, our contract will be with Copeland, correct?
Right, and Northeast is subcontractor to Copeland.
To Copeland, okay, so I will make a motion to approve the original scope of work provided to us from Copeland Building Envelope Consultants, as specified in the December 7, 2023 document.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we got several applications from very qualified people in the, in the planning area, planning field, and I wanted to see what the Board wanted to do with respect to potentially interviewing these candidates. There's a couple of ways it could be done. You could bring them all into a full Board meeting, or you could have one Board member sit down with me and each applicant and make a recommendation after holding private interviews.
So if we did that, where one Board member sits down with you, Brendan, you know, can the other Board members discuss, like I know that I have already had my list of priorities, which ones I would go with first, second, and third?
Yeah, because there would be then a Selectmen's meeting at which the full Board would receive the recommendation, but that doesn't mean that there can't be questions that, and that could shift the way things go, yeah.
Okay.
It could, or you could just interview all of them at a meeting, it's up to you.
I guess my feeling, I feel like there might be a third option that might be more preferable, I think I would prefer, which is instead of bringing this to a regular Monday night Selectmen's Board meeting, maybe we do it like we did with the Town Clerk, where we do a morning meeting and we bring all four of them in, every 30 minutes, we do 7, 7:30, 8, and 8:30, and then we get our opportunity to meet with them, second-floor conference room, it's a little bit more intimate, it's not so intimidating, and we come prepared with all of our questions.
Sure, I can set that up.
I don't know, Alva, what your feeling is, but then we can post it as a meeting, and people that want to attend can attend, but then we're not being recorded, it's not such a big business meeting?
I think that's fine, even if we did two days, so that it's 30 minutes each, you know, and then by the end of two days, just because I have a lot, a lot of days I start at 8:30 in the morning now, so either way.
Oh, sure. Absolutely, being, you know, whatever your schedule, whatever works, and whatever works for Peter, I just...
I'll look at some dates that would include two separate occasions, make sure all Board members can make it, make sure the applicants can make it, and then we'll have to go through the posting process.
Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Great.
I mean, I think they all come with great qualifications, there's just little nuances that I kind of go, oh, I like this one better, I don't, you know.
I agree. But I'd like to meet them all, because sometimes what's on paper doesn't always tell the whole story.
Correct.
And I think meeting with them and getting a feel for who they are and having them answer questions, put them in the hot seat, so to speak, is a little bit, it tells me a bigger story.
The next item is... Uh, the next item is just an update on the Manchester Essex Regional School District Operations Review Proposal that the town has, you know, made to the school committee. We know that the town meeting approved forty thousand dollars to do a, a review. We know that the Manchester Town Meeting declined to, to fund the effort. In the past, the school committee had a meeting at which they decided not to take a position on the matter. The subsequent meeting, they decided to table the matter, and then we thought on December nineteenth, there was going to be discussion of the matter at the school committee meeting, but they did not put it on the agenda. So that's the update, I have nothing else to report with respect to how receptive the school district is or not to the idea of an operations review.
And this would be an operations review meeting, correct?
Excuse me, sorry?
Operations review meeting is...
No, it would be to hire a, to hire a consultant to come in and conduct an operations review.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Using the forty thousand dollars that town meeting had appropriated. So right now, perhaps the school committee will put on the agenda at a future meeting the discussion of the matter, but so far, we have not heard one way or the other.
It was, well, just some more background. Ben Butrick, Chair of the Finance Committee, had a meeting with Pam Boden to talk about the consultants that we had met with, and Pam had said it would be on the next school committee agenda, so it was supposed to be discussed, so...
Yep, I get it. And we'll, you know, whether we reach out to them again and say, "Hey, we, it has not been on your agenda, when are you going to put it on?" You know, "Are you going to put it on the agenda?" To make sure that we have the opportunity to be at that meeting would be probably a good idea.
Excellent. Thank you, Alva.
The next item is the operating and capital budget request package that I shared with the board at the last meeting, and the board was going to review the proposal in case you had any comments or questions, and then I can make any changes that are necessary and submit it to the Finance Committee.
I didn't have any comments.
I didn't have any comments either. You sure it was in the package?
It was at the last meeting, it was, it was big.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
When, that doesn't need to go to them until February first, right?
No, January twelfth.
Oh, all right, I had no comments.
I will go home and get a cop, the copy and we do...
And if you, if you do come up with anything, let me know, but I'm going to turn it in.
I'll CC.
Keep it moving.
The team.
Okay.
Do you want a motion on that? No.
Um, yeah, it's your budget, so you might as well, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the twenty, fiscal year twenty-five operating capital budget.
Request.
Request.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. We're not good as a meeting, a, a board of two, we need our third here.
And I have, and, and usually when I bring this list for the first time, we really don't have a lot of discussion on it, but I've now created the draft list of topics for the annual town meeting in May. If you had anything to say at this point, great, I'd take it down, but you're, you're going to be seeing this list again and again until you sign the warrant.
I did have two things that I wanted to ask you about.
Sure.
One, on this, at some point, and I didn't see it in the three different tiers, the aspect of the school, we've been putting money into a fund, is, is that not going to be on here?
Um, when that gets done, it's usually done in the fall.
Fall, okay.
When free cash is certified, and you know what kind of money you have available.
And then the other thing I...
It actually, it is on there, I think, it's under, um, all-town meeting where it says twelve special-purpose funds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it says, um, school apportionment fund.
Got it.
The top of page two.
And then I see in the third tier where we have the senior tax work-off program. Are we going to, is this something that we're going to follow, or is it something that we should put a committee together to determine what types of work if we did a process like this?
Well, that's certainly been the issue in the past. It's a nice concept, but what exactly would these people do? And in fact, we haven't, when, when this has been discussed in the past, no town department has really come up with anything that would be workable, because we have very small departments with knowledge of what needs to get done day-to-day, and to bring someone in to tell them what to do is going to take three times as long as just doing it on your own. That's kind of the problem with it.
And I get that, but I do think it's a great concept. I mean, I really do think that there's lots of seniors, and I know I'm going to be one of them very soon, so I'm really looking for...
Well, let me get more information on the program. I know that there were updates to it at the state level, just what the, what the maximum is that somebody could enjoy as far as deduction, and there were certain, certain aspects of it that I'll get more information and bring it to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is like I thought to myself, "Well, we may be needing a hand snowplower on the causeway, so is that something that could be put into that? We, you know, gardening, is there some, you know, landscaping, is there things like that, that at different times of the years that we could do?"
Possibly.
Not something that's a full-year-round type of thing, but maybe most times with a person who's retired, they may not want a full-time job, they just may want a few hours. So that's why I just, I saw that and I, I wanted...
Yeah, it's been on there for several cycles, and I'll, I'll get the most recent updates to that law, and then we'll have a discussion next time.
That'd be great, I'd appreciate that.
So my only comment on the annual town meeting draft, because generally I just absorb this for a couple of meetings, but Tier Two, construction of fuel depot at the DPW for all-town vehicles, we've been discussing this for several years now, and it hasn't been a threat. It kind of, you know, that's at the forefront, but it is now. So I wanted to start the conversation by saying I know that we've talked about looking into grant funding to see if there was anything available.
Which I did, and there isn't.
Not, okay.
So can I add to that? Because I know that Manchester does have it. I would love to hear their pros and cons, they've had it for at least ten years now.
The prob, the problem is when we lose the only diesel station in town, there's no diesel in town.
Got it, so I didn't realize that, so that's a really good point to put on the top four part.
And in Manchester, they do have other diesel. So they have their own fuel depot, which is great, but they also have three other service stations, I think one of them has diesel. So we end up having to leave Essex.
And I didn't realize, I mean, I, I didn't put the two and two together regarding diesel because I thought, "Well, we have two other gas stations and they would probably..."
It's really diesel, and if you're going to put in a diesel pump, you might as well put in a gasoline pump.
Absolutely.
But, yep.
My only comment on that, it's just that it's now...
Yeah, and I looked through a variety of grant programs and such, including some of the coastal resilience or, or generally environmental resilience grant programs, and nobody is, is saying that, that that's eligible.
Okay. And it's funny, Alva mentions Manchester, when they did their depot many years ago, a good chunk of theirs was actually grant-funded, which is why I keep bringing it up. So, that's why I bring it up.
And I know that there's pros and cons, because I know that when I was on the school committee, we originally thought about having the school buses use it, and then it wasn't cost-effective, it was cost-effective, we were held into, you know, so there's all different things that I'd like to make sure that we kind of cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Well, one of the really nice pieces of having your own fuel depot, so beyond the fact that if you could get it paid for through grant funding, which is wonderful, the actual delivery of the fuel is on the state bid. So you're now saving, not only do we save, we would save the tax on top of the rate, so it's kind of a double savings, which would be really nice, but anyway, all right. Thank you, Town Administrator Zubraki. I will make a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and ninety-three cents.
So moved, seconded?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three open meeting.
So moved, seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from All Sub Design to the police gift account.
Approved, so seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion...
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
That's a lovely donation. Where, where does these money go?
That goes into the police gift account, so they get to do, once we vote to approve that, they get to use that in any way they want to spend, whether it's equipment, a lunch.
Okay, thanks.
I will make a motion to vote to accept a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from Louis Constantine to the police gift account.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The NRG.
Yeah, so, uh, natural gas, um, the January pricing came out from NRG, and they're at around seventy-one cents now. It was much higher than that, but it's still not even close to the sixty-cent rate that we had when we were with Constellation. That said, NRG is willing to give us that, and, and the National Grid rate, by the way, right now is eighty-one cents, which is what we're paying, okay? NRG will give you a one-year contract for natural gas at seventy-one cents, which has no termination fees, which means if either NRG could come up with a better price, we could break the contract and go into a new contract with them, or if, for some reason, National Grid, which runs month-to-month, came up with a much better price, we could break the contract and go with them. I don't see a downside to it, and I think rather than paying eighty-one cents for January, and who knows what National Grid's going to be in February, sign up at the seventy-one cents and see what happens to rates. If we were signing up on something that had a penalty for early, early termination, that'd be one thing. You could wait another month, but then the NRG rate could be up again, too. You could actually end up at more than eighty-one cents, so, and I even said, if in a month we don't like the rate and we found a better solution, we could break it and move to that, and they said yes.
So there's no downside.
Right, so I think I should go ahead, and the, the chair has already authorized the signing gas contract. I just wanted to let you know what was going on, and I think it makes sense to at least lock in the seventy-one until we see prices come down again, so, there's no vote necessary.
Excellent. I will make a motion to, I'm, Alva, I'm assuming you probably saw these executive session minutes before we talk about these? Did you see the executive session minutes? So these are all related to the public safety building roof, and so the agenda item is to consider the possible release of executive session minutes regarding the public safety building roof for the following dates, twelve-twelve-twenty-two, one-nine-twenty-three, four-ten-twenty-three, and eight-seven-twenty-three. So it was each of the executive minute?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So I will make a motion to release those.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Beezy, it sounds like you had a question about...
Yeah, so we sometimes get questions from the public with respect to how to find agendas and minutes on each of two places where the town has those items. So on the town website, if you go to the page for a board or a committee, you're going to see at the bottom-right corner agendas and minutes. But that is not our official agenda or meeting posting site, okay? It's any agenda that's put on the town website, that's a courtesy, and it's duplicative of where we do have our official posting site, which is a site called My Town Government. And that can be confusing because some boards and committees decided that they only want to put their minutes on My Town Government because that's where they put their agendas, but other boards are showing their minutes only on the town website, because minutes don't have to be posted electronically, we do that as a courtesy, of course. And depending on the board or committee, you might be confused as to where to consistently find these things. That said, My Town Government came about here in Essex, the use of it came about several years ago, when Essex, when the, before the, the open meeting law had relinquished the requirement to post at the corporate office, if you will, at town hall, a copy, a paper copy of the agenda for a meeting posting. And at that time, it was chosen because it, it could, we were not allowed to post anything on a Friday because town hall wasn't open, so conceivably, nobody could come in and see that paper posting. And My Town Government had the ability to custom-build that for the town, so that if someone tried to put in a, a, a meeting posting that included time on a Friday for Essex, it would reject that and say, "You're too late." That's no longer a requirement to have the paper posting available for somebody to walk in off the street. All you have to do is have something on the window that says, "This is where you should go if you want to see our postings," what website. I think that it makes more sense now to move back to just using the town website, which would be a, a, a board of selectmen vote, which I could bring to you at a future meeting, and the board of selectmen could, could declare the town website as the official posting site for open meetings. Then the public would only have to go to the website, and boards and committees would naturally be posting both their agenda and their minutes on the town website, and there wouldn't be different practices for a different committee. I mean, another way to do it is to encourage all boards and committees to do the same duplicative posting, but why do that if we don't even need My Town Government anymore?
And can we find out who actually has access to the My Town Government? Like, I, I'm just wondering, is it really a very minute number of people who access that?
They actually list the towns that use it. When you go to mytowngovernment.org, I believe, it lists the towns, and there's, you know, a dozen maybe, a little more.
And my feeling is our website is probably the best place for it, that's the first place I look, it's the first place if somebody asks me that I direct them to. So I, you know, I know that I personally would prefer it there.
I, I also, I like the idea of just having it in one spot, it does get confusing. I'm also equally included in those emails that people are asking for where are the minutes, and I myself go look for them.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm always looking in too.
Depends on the board or the committee.
Depends on the board or committee.
So, yeah, and, and the other thing to think about is we don't even have a require, now, there's no more requirements as if your town hall isn't open on a Friday, you can't count Friday hours towards the forty-eight hours. That doesn't even exist anymore. So this is, I think, a good time to, and I'll talk to the town clerk, because the town clerk is the one that a- actually monitors the postings and would certify that a posting came in on time, but our website has a timestamp. When you upload a document, it says the day and time, that's really all that's needed. So I'll talk to Marie about it, and then if, as long as she's okay with it, I will bring a vote, suitable vote back to the board to make that change.
Perfect. I will make a motion to ratify the chairman's signature of a volunteer fire assistance program grant application in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the request from Gail McKinley to close Wine and Mall Package Store at Shays Riverside Inn Motel, Inn and Motel for maintenance from January fourth through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the request from Lindsay Bergeron to close the Rivers Bend from January first through late April, twenty-twenty-four.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to ratify the board's approval of the request by J.T. Farham to close for renovations and cleaning from December thirty-first through February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the license for James Vermiliotis, KPN Pizza and Sub, Inc., DBA KPN Pizza and Subs at sixty-five Eastern Ave.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reminders that the board will attend a special public forum offered by the Finance Committee, it's called Tax Talk, How Your Money Fuels the Town, on Thursday, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, at six p.m., right here, Town Hall Auditorium. And the next regular board of selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, at six p.m., third-floor auditorium of the Town Hall, Thirty Martin Street. I have no other items that couldn't be reasonably anticipated, so at this time, I will take public comment. Is there anybody on the line with us this evening that has public comment? If so, please unmute yourself, identify your name and address, and please ask your question. Okay, hearing no public comment, Alva, do you have anything?
Yes, I do have just one quick question.
Yes.
Um, Pam, did Marie give you, have you print the document so that we could sign it regarding...
Campaign finance.
Yes, you have that tonight?
If not, just if you could print it so I could come in and...
I think we did. We do have it. I just don't know whether it's in the folder.
I tried going on to the form and trying to fill it in my... And I'm like, "Oh, you're kidding me. They're not having a tab." I can't fill it in.
Right there. We have it.
Wonderful. Elva, I'm going to follow you down and make a copy of it so I can do one, too.
Great.
She said that all three could sign the same one.
Jeez, so perfect. So it is 7:06 p.m. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Approved.
Yes. Aye. Thank you, Joan.